Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome all of you to this very important meeting today, July 3rd, 2018, of the City of Portsmouth Council Chamber. Madam Secretary.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. As I call your name, please indicate your presence with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner Youngblood.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffler. Commissioner Gee. Commissioner Thaxton.
Present.
Commissioner Ricks.
Present.
Five members of the Planning Commission are present.
Commissioners, before you are the members of the June 5th, 2018, public hearing, if there aren't any changes, we're in need of a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from the June meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the June the 5th, 2018, minutes. As I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner Gee?
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricks?
Yes.
Five members have approved the minutes from the June the 5th, 2018, public hearing. Please note our future meetings and conferences. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August the 7th, 2018, at 12:30 PM, sixth-floor conference room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 PM, City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their August the 14th and August the 28th, 2018, public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time if you have not already done so. Our first public hearing item is UP-18-04 Downtown. Edward Walker requests a use permit at 467 Court Street for an entertainment establishment. The property is currently zoned downtown D1-T5. The property is further described as Tax Map 6, Parcel 90. The comprehensive plan recommends mixed-use downtown development. Our staff coordinator is Stacy Porter. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
How y'all doing?
All right.
My name is Teddy Walker, and I'm opening Old Town Public House at the Old Brutus location.
I'm sorry?
Yep. My name is Teddy Walker. I'm opening a restaurant at the Old Town, the Old Brutus location. It's gonna be called Old Town Public House. We're gonna be mainly a family dining restaurant. After 9:00, we were looking to have a live entertainment with acoustic bands, maybe karaoke, something for late night. That's kinda what we're looking for with the use permit. And there is a piano in there. We were looking to maybe have that during dinner hours and maybe a jazz band, something just entertaining people that come in. We do have a pretty open menu, which I have copies of if y'all would like me to pass those around and stuff to y'all. But yeah, we'll have the Woodstone piece oven in there. Yeah, you can. We're gonna be selling different lunch things for shipyard people, Coast Guard people, all the locals in the area. And then the dinnertime, it could be a little nicer, the items are a little bit nicer. The lunch portion isn't on that part of the menu, still being finished, but figured I'd bring it. Yeah, we're not gonna be, I wouldn't say an entertainment spot, though. It's more family casual dining. Any entertainment will be after 9:00, which will turn over to 21 and up, so we won't have any entertainment around children or anything like that, except for maybe a piano player.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Youngblood?
I noticed on your application that you mentioned the first floor and then using the second floor as a mezzanine office. Your floor plan that you laid out would indicate that that second floor use would not occupy the entire second floor. Could you tell me more about that, please?
Yes, sir. The way the building is laid out is a little different, I guess. There's, the whole first floor is what I have. The back of the kitchen, it just happens to be like 20 feet tall, so they made a mezzanine above the kitchen. And it's about 1,100 square foot. It was an office. Right now, it hardly can be used.
So it's still really on the first floor of the property? You're not addressing doing anything on the second or other floors?
No, sir. The second floor, as far as my knowledge, right now, Max, who owns the place, him and David, they are planning on doing some kind of public thing where you can rent it and maybe have a wedding there, maybe some kind of event there. And then he's putting his marketing company on the third floor. So none of the, what used to be there.
So, but...
I don't have access.
Yeah, for your application, you're not doing anything on the, above the first floor, correct?
No, sir.
Okay. How many patrons do you think that you will be able to accommodate? I know that the fire marshal says that the load is 150, including staff. What are your thoughts?
I have seating for 120. I'm thinking it's going to be around there. Lunchtime, I doubt, would be quite as many people. Dinnertime, I hope it fills up to that. But 120 is where I can seat, so I don't feel like I'm gonna be over that. It's not going to be, it won't be a lot of, there's nowhere to dance, there's no dance floor, there's nothing like that. You walk into the restaurant, as soon as you walk in, you'll see your dining room tables. You go forward, you'll see the bar. You'll see more tables on the left side, there's booths on the wall. And then you'll see the open kitchen with the brick oven and all that. Really nowhere to do anything else.
Okay. I know that you've been talking with the staff about the various conditions for this use, one of which was no DJ, and you, I guess, have agreed with that.
Yeah, I don't want any kind of DJ music. That's like dancing. I don't have anywhere to do that. It wouldn't benefit me. The only kind of DJ that I could ever imagine having would be maybe a karaoke guy, and that's just something that's kinda fun. I've seen, I've done this in different places, and it's more casual, more fun.
Yes.
It's not so much dancing. Now, people do like listening to the wobble. They'll play that, but...
One of the other conditions that the staff has been talking to you about was to not have your patrons blocking the sidewalk. Our experience in the past, and I live in Old Town, was that there were significant disruptions of the traffic flow on that sidewalk, and even in the street, that resulted from both the patrons and the staff, particularly the security staff that was there when the mansion was going on. And so I'm going to ask that one of the conditions be amended so that neither the patrons nor the staff block the sidewalk, and that you not have valet parking. That was another sore point under the previous owner or previous use. Quite frankly, I don't think that with your load of 120 patrons, that either of these is gonna be an issue, but I know that the neighbors are gonna feel a whole lot better knowing that that's one of the staff restrictions here, and you've agreed to that.
No, I understand that. Actually, if it makes you feel better, the valet guy came in and gave me his business pitch, and I already told him no.
Okay.
Why would I need that? I'm not gonna need that. And I understand the issues with the sheer amount of people that could fit in there for the club scene they had. I'm incapable of that. I can't do that. I can only fit what I can in my little spot, and I don't believe that Brutus ever had an issue prior to the mansion being there with any kind of traffic flow. Mine is gonna be relatively similar to his.
Yeah.
So I agree with you, and I'm okay with that. I don't plan on having anything out front, like having lines set up or anything like that. I don't feel like I'll ever need that.
Well, I know that when Brutus was operating just as a restaurant, it was very popular with folks across the city, and particularly with the Old Town people, myself included. And we look forward to having something similar to that in that space. I think it'll be a good addition to downtown. But I also wanna make sure that the folks in Old Town feel comfortable because, quite frankly, the mansion left a very bitter taste in our mouth.
Mine, too.
And we felt that we had been deceived, and so, I mean, cards are on the table. I want you to know exactly what you're up against.
I understand.
I really believe that the Old Town residents are anxious to see what you're doing and look forward to having you as part of our business community.
I feel the same. I feel like that's what I've gotten from most people in the area.
Good.
Yeah. I think all the pictures y'all had on your slide, I spoke to everybody that ran all of those businesses, and they're pretty anxious just to have somewhere else to go. And I was, I'm sending menus to them and everything, so I think it's going to be received well.
Okay. Well, I don't have any other questions for you. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions for Mr. Walker? Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-18-04. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Thank you. I'm Teri Danaher. I live at 413 Dinwiddie Street in Old Town. And I would like to say that Mr. Youngblood has pretty much represented the views of the Civic League, which I was just the past president of. I think he's covered everything, and I think that we are all looking forward to having a business there, a successful one. We wish you the best, and I think all of our concerns have been addressed, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Honorable Commissioners, and fellow interested parties. I'm Mark Gadoldog Yatrowski, 2713 Sterling Point Drive. I'm also an Old Town alumnus, my first 11 years in the city of Portsmouth. My wife and I made our home on Middle Street. And so the well-being of the downtown business district and the residents of Old Town is still a near and dear concern of mine. Commissioner Youngblood did, as Ms. Danaher said, a really credible job of reciting the issues that plagued the predecessor establishment. It was really a shame because Brutus squandered the goodwill that it went into the building with. It had had a good run on Dinwiddie Street. It was a favorite place for brunches. The food was always excellent. And then apparently the economics of the restaurant scene in downtown got the better of them, and they were not making it. And this is a real challenge, because the price point in Portsmouth for dining out is not as high as in Virginia Beach and Norfolk. If you're going to cultivate patronage, you've got to have an economic model that allows you to pay your bills and give the customer value for the money they spend. So, you know, I do have sympathy for somebody trying to start a business of this type here, but my sympathies lie principally with the residents of the neighborhood. And one of my former nearby neighbors was well within the sound radius of Brutus and remains, you know, poised, positioned very precariously in terms of being within the residential area and being at the edge of the business district. So I would not want to see a rowdy place. I would not want to see one with disruptions to traffic flow and pedestrian traffic, and one that creates a sonic boom that is detrimental to the quiet enjoyment of adjacent property. So I wish Mr. Walker well, and I want him to be circumspect in terms of what he does with his business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else who would like to address UP-18-04? Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, the chair is in need of a motion on UP-18-04 with conditions. Commissioner Thompson?
I would like to make a motion that we recommend approval of UP-1804 with conditions as amended or suggested by Mr. Youngblood.
Is there a second?
I'd second it.
Okay. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve UP-18-04 with conditions and the amendment as recommended by Commissioner Youngblood. As I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricks?
Yes.
This item is approved 5 to 0 with conditions and the amendment. Our next item, Z-18-02 Laurel Park, C. Rayford Ure, on behalf of 3,600 Forest Haven Lane. The property is currently, no, Forest Haven Lane LLC requests a proffered rezoning of 3,600 Forest Haven Lane. The property is currently zoned general residential, GR. The proposed zoning is conditional general mixed-use, GMU-K. The property is further described as Tax Map 832, Parcel 1. The comprehensive plan recommends low-to-medium-density, single-family development. Staff coordinator is Stacy Porter. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, Chairman Williams and members of the Portsmouth Planning Commission. I'm Rayford Ure. Office is at 901 Port Center Parkway in Portsmouth. Been around for a long time, as a matter of fact, and I remember Law Park and development by Mr. Homer Armstead, who used to have the Armstead Morrison Hardwell store out at Alexander Shortly after annexation, Lowe's was the first occupant of a building, and the first Lowe's, I might add, in the Portsmouth area and Western Branch. That is now a rehab Toyota dealership known as First Team. Lowe's eventually closed after annexation, and things began to move out to North Suffolk and Western Branch started developing more intensely. And as a matter of fact, the building remained vacant for quite a while, and then sometime after Mr. Ashton Lewis returned from the racetrack circuit down in Charlotte, he and his son picked it up and developed next door to what is now Hall Chevrolet, that was incidentally started by Ashton's father, Mr. W. O. Lewis. So there's quite a history to this entire thing. Here again, with annexation, I can't explain to you how this long lot came into existence. But as you can see, it really needs to be cut off, because that's what happened to the rest of the lots, which is now part of the parking area and automobile storage for Toyota. They run along behind the lots of all of the ones in yellow. So, point being that if and when you approve of this rezoning application, nothing will really change, except it'll just be a continuation of the parking area in all likelihood, if and when it's necessary. But it's something that should be cleaned up and cleared up now as Mr. Lewis and I both get older. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you might have, but I appreciate your vote in favor of this.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Ure? Commissioner Youngblood?
Thank you. Mr. Ure, if I understand you correctly, you don't know why that's a long skinny lot, and none of the other houses have that extra depth?
Well, I think, and I was not privy to being a part of this, in the acquisition after Lowe's moved out and the Toyota dealership or whatever came in. But I do believe that all the lots, once upon a time, was that depth, and what has happened, the dealership acquired the rear of all of those lots except that one, and maybe the person who owned it at the time was not in the mood to convey. So later on, Mr. Ashton Lewis acquired what you see in red up there, and there is a nice home there now owned by Mr. Lewis, and a garage in the rear that is on the property. The remainder of it is just some pine trees, and that's about the size of it.
Yes, sir.
And that's the best history I can give you on it.
Okay. I went out and looked at the property, and it just struck me odd, almost as though possibly that were two lots at one time back when this was Norfolk County.
No, sir. I do not believe that's the case. I think they were full depth, and like I say, I think as long as we've been around, there's always one person that seems to hold it out, and that probably is the way that happened.
Okay.
And then later on, as times changed, Mr. Lewis was able to acquire that to round it out.
Right.
And as you know, he's planning to keep the house and the garage and just square off the rest of it to fit in with what he already has.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Certainly.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions for Mr. Ure? Ms. Ricks?
So are you saying this is just going to be a parking area?
It may be. By having it rezoned like we're asking, it is possible that should the need arise, that it will become a parking area. It could be, and please take this, I'm not the owner, but just things, but there are no immediate plans to expand it into a parking lot. It may become a little park area for people who are having their car serviced and their children to utilize, but it's something that should be cleared up, I think, to kinda square the whole neighborhood off and make it a park. Here again, behind the lots that people now occupy in yellow, there'll be no change. It's strictly behind the lot that Mr. Lewis already owns, that it could possibly be in the future a change. But at this time, there are no plans for doing that. It's just something that should be cleaned up. Does that answer you? Okay.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions for Mr. Ure? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-18-02. I have no registered speakers. If there's anyone here who would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, the chair is in need of a motion on Z-18-02. Miss Stacy?
Stacy, did this have conditions also?
The chair is in need of a motion on Z-18-02 with proffers. Commissioner Thompson?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning for 3,600 Forest Haven Lane with proffers.
Is there a second? Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve Z-18-02 with proffers. As I call your name, please respond with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricks?
Yes.
This item is approved 5 to 0 with proffers. Our next item is Z-18-03 Hodges Manor, request of Don Smith and Stifling &amp; Inc. to rezone approximately 2.52 acres from neighborhood mixed-use to light industrial with conditions to construct a four-story self-storage building with 147,936 square feet of interior space at 5905 Portsmouth Boulevard. The proffered conditions restrict the property to self-storage only, indoor storage only, and compliance with a site layout and building elevation submitted with the application. The comprehensive plan's generalized future land use map denotes that the property is located in a mixed-use corridor. The property is also referenced as Tax Map 616, Parcel 22. Our staff coordinator is John Hartley. This application will continue for 60 days to our September the 4th meeting. However, if there is anyone here who would like to address this application, you can come forward at this time, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed. We need a motion. I need a motion. We're gonna defer for 60 days.
I would like to make a motion that we recommend this application be continued for 60 days to the September 4, 2018, Planning Commission meeting.
Commissioner Thaxton?
I'll second.
Members of the...
Okay.
Members of the Planning Commission, we have a motion and a second for the continuation of Planning Commission item Z-18-03. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to defer this meet, application to the September the 4th, Planning Commission meeting. We will have a roll call as I call your name. name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricks?
Yes.
This item is deferred for 60, for 60 days.
Commissioners, will there be any other questions or discussions? There being none, Madam Secretary?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Baldwin, any additional questions or comments?
No, sir.
Commissioners, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.